On down the road, then and only then can we justify the tax rate that will be adopted. As it is now, I can't even tell what would be cut if we raise or if we lower a tax rate. I don't even know you guys, I can't. I would challenge the city council to not only reject this budget, but to come back with a rate 10% lower than the new, than, excuse me, than the known new revenue tax rate. Not only that, but the stated goal of every city council member should be to put the city on a plan to reduce the reliance on property taxes by at least 5% every year, to the point where we can be counted among other cities such as Stafford, South Lake, Keller, Dallas, and even Terrence County. These entities have all reduced their property taxes. Will the Fredericksburg City Council take the leadership role in representing the citizens and develop a budget that reflects the economic realities of our city, state, country, and our citizens here? Thank you.
Tony Benson.
Good evening. My name is Tony Benson. I've been in the community for over 20 years. Can you hear me out? Okay. My name is Tony Benson. I've been in the community for over 20 years and you know who I am. Thanks for listening. Is that better? Okay. Our city continues to shell a profit year after year. They are either taxing too much or underestimating the sales tax revenue. This profit is called surplus. In the past three years, total revenue from lawn taxes, the current industry, has increased by 30%, all during the same period of population only 8%. How is this justified? In the past 10 years, this thing's budgeting during 111.282%, while population only 9.4%. The current control's budget shows an increase of 10.6% over the last year. Government is not a profit-making enterprise. This scenario appears to be repeated year after year with large profits reached. Shouldn't the city be shooting for a balanced budget to begin with? Rather than over-budgeting and using the surplus in the following year? Why are the calculations so flat? And there's a sort of gap to drop from what the full revenue expenditures have been in your year? Why? The bottom line is the money is the people's money. The budget ought to be simply balanced to begin with. Any surplus belongs to the people and rightfully returned to the people. Does the council remember they are the public servants that work at the will of the people? Why does the council think it is the city's virtue to provide sports complex, hold the wine and big fest, provide 5G, etc.? These things may be nice, the point is not the city's job to use taxpayer money for these things. And it's outside their scope of responsibility. If folks want a festival or a sports complex, this is the only big community people can look for where to come from going. It is simply not yours to get. Citizens are asking questions, answers, and did. Why $8,000 for batting cage on a commercial page costs $10,000? Why are we using taxpayer money? $86,000 for parks janitorial, how did we go from $86? How do they get to $86 from $38,000 in 2023? $110,000 for Brownness, we have two, why do we need three? $40,000 for two golf carts. New cars run 75 to 95,000 a year, luxury models 20, with the city paying which it should have. Standard car is sufficient. $50,000 for records information management project, the city can accomplish this or a fraction of the proposed budget amount. $94,000 administrative general property maintenance. Counted this line from $27,243 to $94,000. City department's social protocol expenditures add to a large sum. Do they include entertaining alcohol, food, yes? We don't know, but if they do, we should not be paying the taxpayers. Remember, voters in their family budgets are adversely affected by every unnecessary or extra dollar taken in the form of taxes to pay for the city budget. The city unanimously agreed to adopt the highest rate, tax rate possible. Again, the right thing to do for a responsible budget this time is no revenue tax rate. In fact, more. All of the city continues to go government and the people's experience. Thank you.
Jeanette Horrison.
Me, my name is Jeanette. I've been here for 30 years. It's like this year. This year, my tax rate's holding up for 3%. For no reason, I am in touch with one house. And every year, I look at these taxes, they have to rise and it's, I'm counting the dates. I'm counting the dates when I may have to meet, which many people have. And it's not right. It's, it's just not right. So... I showed you a chart last time, which is pretty eye-opening and I wasn't having it on paper. I don't know if anyone's seen this, but it takes the budget for the past 10 years. Just taking the numbers off the city website for each year, the budget that was adopted for each year. And the budget has risen like 111%, like somebody said. You can see that here and I'll give you this chart last, this one's a little revised, but it's pretty interesting. If you, how many people's income has increased double? Many of us aren't income gains that have increased at all. Yet our costs have gone way up. We go to the grocery store, just pass the gas station, it's pretty big denied now. That's a killer, it was just $3 dollars like a few months ago. You have all these things up, grocery, insurance, not everything, the dollars are less. And then when I see the council or the city having on the budget last year and this year, pay increases for employees, it hurts. Not that people need pay raises, but I'm paying for that. And I have no pay increase. And I'm squeezing every year more and more, there's getting the email room. And I'm just, I am speaking for all just the average people that live here, the simple that are working. But just the average day-to-day person who works here, who's raised her family here. You had a speaker, I think last time, on managing growth. He talked about managing growth of the town, of as more and more we're managing growth and slowing down so instead of rate you can handle. I implore you. This budget needs to be managed, need to manage the growth. Budget is growing faster than the ability, the ability of people to pay. And you can see that because this other line down here is if you took the population growth plus inflation, which is a responsible standard to use. And then he, and, and it's used by the state legislature, the state budget goes by this. You know, if this is, this is a reasonable, responsible way to give you a standard to go by. I'm sorry. So, we're way out of line. Our budget right now is at 81 million. If you went by this standard, it'd be at 54 million. And people know it because we fill it in our pocketbook. But here it's on paper. So... I'm calling the council to do like the number of cities have done, some of them have not sleep on below the revenue tax, but they've been doing it for several years, 5% every year, just to bring things back in line. And I would like to see the council start looking at the long-term here and start to change this trajectory. And you can start this year. Thank you.
Jules, I don't know the last pick. The Watts, great.
Hi, I'm Jules and I've been here for 30 years, my mom as well. And I'm here, just the two of us, but I represent my whole family, my five kids that I own school here. But they're working a lot to try and pay rent. And the ripple effect. Where do we go from here? You know, I ask my kids, what is going to become of Fredericksburg? And they say it's going to become a ghost town. You have all these businesses moving in, all these people with money moving in. Your rate goes up, taxes go up. They have to work double jobs just to live in a separate house of mine, the ones that can. And I own a business too. It's affecting the business. So, they can't be here tonight to do what I'm doing because they're working. But if you ask why the taxes are going up, because we've been sold out for tourism. We, we wanted to live here forever. We wanted this to be our home. But I've been property searching now for a long time because no one can afford it anymore. Talk to anybody in the hill country, it's numb. Fredericksburg is way out of line. And this just reinforces it. So, this really does complete, let us stay.
Deborah Hoppecker.
Deborah Hoppecker, now living in the city. So here are the facts. Since the comprised COVID scare and mandates, mandated bioweapon clot shot, American counties and cities are in a very thick state of affairs. The average American is confused and desperate. No one knows even who's running our country. Yes, in Fredericksburg, yeah. Savings rates have plummeted. Credit card debt, mortgage debt, college debt have all accelerated. Who knows who's even in our country?
Deborah, we should move the microphone out of your mouth, please, so that it's a company understanding you.
The average, the average retired folks are enduring horrific financial and medical issues. Not to mention lung disease, some weeks. Since three years of COVID, city utilities and property taxes are showing significance to liquidities or just not being paid. I believe in the next five years, we will be seeing cities and county budgets destroyed due to the lack of deficient income from property taxes and sales tax revenue. Please give our working and retired citizens a reprieve. The county under Judge Jones, which I believe is the commissioner's court often, voted decidedly for no new type of tax. Let our city listen and join hands with the county and propose no new type of tax. Thank you.
Mary Lee Marshall.
Mary Lee Marshall, I live in town. I've lived here since 1990. I don't know how... I don't know what can be said to talk you out this budget. I don't know how you can with any conscience vote yes on this budget. If you adopt this budget, when the next election comes around, this sheet of paper will be published all over this town. It's your decision. We don't like this. We don't want in favor of this extra stuff. And it is extra stuff, a lot of it. You're already getting more money because the price has gone up. And you go up, but the money, the cradles on business property, their taxes. And you go up on the cradle of business property, their taxes go up, which means their prices go up. So you get more than sales taxes. I recommend you not do this.
Okay, that's all the folks who have free signed up. Is there anyone else you'd like to? All right.
I'm moving to go to public hearing and director of session. A second.
Motion second to go into regular session. All favors say aye. All right, we have an executive session topic. And remind is the, is this about Minister?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the consider and discuss the appointment evaluation reassignment and or duties for public officer. Specifically the Minister of War and I see the judges here. So I'll take a motion to go to exec.
We will be going to executive session.
Second. Motion second to go to executive session for this item. All favors say aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, if you will make your way out.
All right, thank you for patience. We had no business to transact in the executive session. To transact as a result of the executive session. So we'll go to item two B. This will be your point, but we'll have the discussion on outstanding items. Mayor Council, we, we again have a first word, President. Here, yeah, seeing a lot of this information, the council likely have a few questions you may want us to address. You have the items, either a letters in the editor or comment that may have been made during the couple of hearings today. So really that, that's what this discussion is for. If you have any other outstanding items, I'll tell you the last slide on the Christmas list. We do have food and wine fest also Minister for any changes there we just discussed. Are really all that we have. It's major, it's outstanding. And this is an opportunity to, the council, the mayor council to, to take. All of the comment that you receive, all the questions that we have not answered. And let's try to address those as best as possible tonight, so that we can get something in front of your ninety for the option. So this one, President, do you have anything to open with?
I'll start to go through the changes that we made since the last meeting. So you love the road or not? There's not, there's not much here. Okay, so basically where we're at now with our projected fund balance, even changes that we've made. We have ten thousand dollars in food and wine festival nations that was there. So we removed ten thousand. So that lowered the food and wine festival by ten thousand. And then for general fund expenditure changes, we removed the pickleball. Also have some projects for the first part of the day. We removed the Minister of War position. I had the remainder probably of the project. So it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that from the general fund expenses for last meeting. So that puts us at eighty one million, one hundred million dollars. And I just wanted to state again, I know, I know we talked about this, but as part of the eleven million dollar deficit number there. That includes water projects of approximately seven point two million that are funded with.
Could you go over the list again of the specific, just the category, food, wine, fest, mini core, move to the ball, what up?
Uh, our best broadband, we added that back in. There was still about a hundred and thirty seven thousand that's remaining. And here is actually we need to definitely maybe we'll get all that in this year. We're still trying to get that last difference. Oh, and also with removing the pickleball, we have it in the retention loss for. Remove the three hundred thousand pickleball project and then we added in for the police department a retention.
Why? Can you, can you talk about? That is that I. Million water projects coming for impact base, where those impact base is.
So the developers pay for those impact fees. Um, we talked a little bit during the meeting supporting. As if you're having a new hospital in terms for to develop and, and have to pay that amount, not much to set up for utilities for your home. And then also for the larger projects, they can be.
So for every subdivision belt in town, the connection that is made of our water wastewater utility system. That developer pays roughly thirty five hundred dollars per connection on water and wastewater. It's based on size. That's, that's five eighths inch here, correct? For instance, shape, this is. When we jump up to a one inch or two inch or four inch, it's personal development. That can be in the hundred, awful hundreds of thousands range. So this four point. Four point three eight one million that you see right here, that it's included in the budget that actually makes up about four million. We'll all have the statistic to show it's not taxpayer dollars, it's a pay. We talked about this, I had a conversation with the city, yes, correction, story. Conversation was a two point eight trillion dollar. I probably had to do the land waste water project, which is a little bit in here. You're talking to that, but some of that is also from this. It's a brand sport.
Yes, uh, so it's a combination of grant funding and a loan from the Texas Water Development Board. So I believe about just under four hundred thousand of that project is via a grant state. And then the remainder of that will be paid through, I believe it's a twenty five year revenue bond. So the city will pay a zero interest loan back to, to the state to fund that project.
So of the eleven, of the eleven million dollar deficit right now, we retired one percent, but still has not been made in progress. So, so we're showing eleven million dollar deficit, all right?
Yes.
We're showing a six hundred K utility connection, they use that to retire some of that sixty percent.
So in the, in the budget this year, we have about eight hundred thousand in impact fee revenue. But we also have accumulated in prior reviews, impact fee revenue that we're going to be using to fund these projects.
So we realize this.
Yes.
This decrease in the fund balance, water from ten billion is beginning. And then we're going to increase six point eight eight the fourth column.
Yes.
The good portion of, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Eight hundred thousand.
We have eight, about eight hundred thousand in impact, the new impact that's going to be collected in twenty twenty four.
Project.
Yes.
Okay. And you've got a fund that has some in it already.
Yes.
Yes.
To what number?
About five.
Five minute. And.
That's a food and water ticket.
Okay, so. Is there some of this guarantee that is money for projects that has already been received either through grant money or through a key? Any, any outside source? Is this their scrip rebound? There's some money that's left over from these projects. In other words, this is not a six million dollar hit to cash that we're going to receive.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So we've got a reserve, an impact fee reserve. So we're using funds that developers pay in previous years. You like those ones to pay.
So why, as a, as a person who doesn't do municipal financing for a living? Why does it count against the decrees in fund balance and make it look like we're, we're. Operating on a huge deficit instead of money that's already designated and plodding for these purposes. That's it.
That's right. The fund map comes into play. You know, we talk about budgeting out of deficit and it's, it's really called a structurally balanced budget. Because you can count on your beginning fund balance. That beginning fund balance includes this impact fee that we collected in prior years and we didn't pay for those projects.
So it's a function of funded accounting.
Yes.
Correct. It's, it's. Weird animal.
Right, it is. It's cash that we have. There's cash that we have.
Okay.
A lot of this is through.
Did you understand that they made sure this looks at this as like, gosh, you're going to spend another million dollars more than you're typing in? Just second. So this number here. Citywide revenue versus expenses. You'll go to that slide. I'll let you ask this thing. It's, I've slow tracked. So the last column. About sixty nine, sixty nine million budget and expenses and eighty one expenses. That eighty one translated from this with fund balance chain includes those numbers. That are not real deficits, if in my mind.
Right in and never.
Okay. So there is an education issue that. Because I don't get it. I understand, I've been a nonprofit all my life and I work with the county. So well, fund accounting and nonprofit work is just a different act. It's a different. But the idea that you're just kind of monkeying numbers is what we have to overcome. Because it looks like we don't care. We're, we're going to take in eleven million dollars or spend eleven million dollars more than we're taking in. So live with it. We want to spend that eleven million dollars. And that is not good. Okay, Jeanette.
Yes, so what I'm going to say is those fund balances. Work out your budget, estimate what you're going to, what's going to come in and also your expenditures. So what does make sense to me is that every year. What is estimated as revenue always ends up being way beyond. And they're bringing way beyond what gets estimated and saving expenditures, expenditures that are noted. Okay, at the end of the year, they end up paying quite a bit less. Now, I know that you initially referred leeway, that's fine, but this is huge. Me, I see, okay, the fund balance was thirty three million. You know, I understand that some of that is probably all over from the three month reserve, right? Okay, so then you have like what it goes to twenty million left. So eleven, eleven million of it is going to go towards the next year's expenditures. And then you still have seven or eight million dollars left. So what I don't understand, it doesn't seem right there. Is that things are being overfunded or under whatever with the revenues that are written into the budget. When you're expecting are well below what you're going to receive. And I mean, expenditures tend to be much higher than what you end up spending. So at the end, you always end up with this extra, like in this case, you can save twenty million dollars. You know, you keep rolling the, the three month, you know, into. And the thing is that we're paying. You're asking for tax money with this budget. If it's overshot, which is what it looks like, it looks like this, you have data that shows you what your fund balance were before. And how much you usually get for all these fees and days and, and you know what the increases are generally. And. But to end up with all of this and then you rule it into, it just, it's, it, it doesn't.
Good, I addressed that.
We, we did that, Krista has some information regarding the financial concern. One side specifically of sales tax. That is really the amount on the positive side of revenues that we expected. I don't think anybody knew what to expect during pandemic or surprise breaking records. So we did feel like that. We didn't plan on that, but we did feel like that. Yes, you're correct. And cities and counties develop their budget, you know, even at federal level. In the conservative thing, there is project revenues lower, excuse me. Yeah, revenues lower, it's higher than they actually are at the beginning. We're trying to get a little bit closer, but there's a lot of uncertainty. But let me, let me talk about the large number. What makes up the majority of the deficit for projects, mainly in the water wastewater side, the enterprise side. That we're trying to catch up on. And I'll get back to this a little bit, back after twenty fourteen. So between the teams, Sydney had a great study done, a great redesign completed by HDR Engineering. That coincided with a master planning effort. That sort of like we established a list, genetic, speaking to you. Providing this information. We put together a long list of prioritized water projects and we developed a rate. That would address those projects, banking cash, servicing debt, or planning vehicles. We just completed eighteen and a half minutes of development of the project and made an addition to our water infrastructure. So all of these projects are planned for twenty years based on that rate. That rate hasn't changed in a long time. Twenty close rates in state, we got all that programmed in. We were not able to fit these projects out and do a lot of this work. Certain times throughout pandemic, we're catching back up now in the majority of what you see in the deficit. In fact, I don't have the number of Krista, but it makes up the majority of that eleven million whole deficit. It's us catching back up with those dollars that we got in bank and bank doing projects that we've been planning on doing for years. Just haven't had the opportunity to get those.
Okay, that's. Let me redirect here. The. Annual discussion on the tax rate is to support the general fund. The other things on here are enterprise funds that are supported by. Customer fees, your like bill, your water bill, your sure bill, et cetera. So the general fund is funded by primary sales tax and property tax. So it's, it's really that, is it the. Like expenditures here in the third column of the projected fund balance. We're looking at funding twenty seven billion in this scenario. Looking at funding twenty seven million with sales tax and property tax. And do we include the food and wine fest? Is that included in general fund?
It is included in general fund, but for the fund balance, for a sheet for business listed somewhere.
Okay. So it's included in the twenty seven?
It's the, the food and wine fest is right below that.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that. Okay, so it's twenty seven million two.
Yes.
So we're not, we're not discussing tax rates, tax care or anything, enterprise funds, water, electric. It's just general fund and food and wine fest. So. Go to your slide that says general fund, council redirect, eight times. Go to the slide that shows general fund revenue versus expenses. We have. Uh, the next, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, so we have these. Yeah, yeah, so we have these recurring annual expenses, in other words, this is bottom line, so to speak, used to call it that. So you've got thirteen million personnel, EMO, nine million, et cetera. Then the property tax, voter approved tax rate would bring in in twenty four, nine ninety six, four thirty seven. The no new tax rate, we've heard several citizens request, see, and one that requested even less than the non no new revenue tax rate, would bring in roughly five hundred thousand, so half of what I think voter proof tax rate. So am I correct, Chris, that that last section there, the bottom line? The no new rate tax rate, no new revenue tax rate? We would need to find six hundred ninety five thousand dollars to cut from current proposal to fully fund the budget with the no new revenue tax rate. Counsel, I'm talking out loud to educate myself, make sure I have it. Seven hundred thousand dollars we would need to find if we decided to go to the tax. Other comments, counsel? Question that I've asked is, excuse me, that doesn't include the $6 million, we talked about water stuff, that's enterprise stuff. We're talking about that twenty seven million. No, I know this is a different bucket of money and we talked about water revenues. I talked about this this morning, we've gone to stage four and everyone's done a great job here. We conserve, I think we've got the metrics of water reduction and we've also bundled out a million dollars to the income, so that's just an observation, it's just an observation, rate that's not going up, so that's just something I'm looking at. But the question I asked and I don't really answer to is, based on the delta between voter approval rate and the new tax rate of six hundred K per year, what do we lose? And I know there's a long term implication, twenty sixteen, twenty six, twenty seven, so for what do we lose, what's at risk, I think that's the discussion.
We're limited by how much we can raise taxes every year. If we go with no revenue, even if we hit that three and a half percent cap, we're still at a very different. And that, that's really the issue, you know, we keep collecting less and less. We can get, you know, the two sides of, you have work tax collection. You have the new properties coming along with the no new revenue rate, those would be only properties that generate additional revenue. And you have the existing properties and there's a real big question right now with the property values are going to do over the next couple of years. I mean, all of us are feeling back to back here, so eighty five percent increase in our property values. It sounds great until you pay your taxes, but so we're hearing from everyone from Travis County, which I don't think is a real good comparison here to Curville, to, I know a lot of people have contacted our city secretary's office, contacted me, finance. This is a question that a lot of different community are asking, there's a lot of uncertainty, what the market is going to do. I think we'll see interest rates come down just a little bit, but the market is not very strong. So you really, when you look at it across the state generally, values are going to stay flat and a lot of people are projecting down. And so we're certainly, we're certainly trying to be very conservative when we talk about, you know, the property evaluations. And again, no new revenue, we don't capture anything from the existing properties. It's all new properties coming, the county had a number of new properties coming, close to eight hundred million.
Say it again.
Close to eight hundred million in new property.
County had.
It's hovering right around twenty eight, thirty cents.
So the county had eight hundred million dollars worth of new property footwork.
Right, so with the no new revenue rate, again, the dividing line is new properties coming on. Existing properties, you know, not seeing the increase in revenue. They're generating a million dollars in revenue at no new revenue.
Just the new pro.
Just the new profits.
Does everyone know that, does everyone get the ramifications of that?
Yeah.
That's a big deal for the county.
And I will, and I will say this, you know, when we look at, again, and again, I understand the concerns, you know, about, about any kind of tax increase. We've shown you what's a per fifty thousand dollar valuing impact be for voter approval rate, seventy two dollars a year. We've broken that down to about six dollars a month. But we have a number of properties that will be coming on. Due to the tax rolls, we're probably looking at an additional three million. So I've been seeing residential properties coming on and that's, that's fairly significant.
Is this especially low here for the city in new properties?
Yes. Yes, it is, and you know, it just, as you can see, generate all that much more revenue. Now, you know, the original number that we showed you was a hundred and seventy four thousand in addition revenue. That, that is where we adjusted the interest on sinking because we have debt falling on. So basically what that did was put more money into the EMOs of the equation. So we are in a very good position to issue debt, no doubt, but we're also in a good position financially that we're going to have a lot. So that's why it shows us, I'm asking for confirmation. As we call it, the nut in, in, in business, the nut we have to cover every week, maybe a month or a year. And then you start gaining some profit. The nut for us is twenty three million and forty seven hundred and thirty three dollars. Okay, so to get that, your bottoms would be voter approval rate and then bring in one nine four oh one. Um, and then, but the total budget is twenty seven, so. So that's going to be funded through the fund balance.
But that's not included in the slide, it's not, it's not registered, it doesn't happen year after year. We're looking at, this is what we would be looking at, it definitely has to include, we would at least have these expenses every year.
I'd say, but the budget for the general fund, I mean, the expenses projected on here are twenty seven plus.
Right.
So that extra four-ish bid for that to this would be funded from fund balance. Which is at current eleven million, which is because of some really fabulous years that we can anticipate. Because people like to visit Frederickburg with sales tax, plus everybody's paying their sales tax because everything's costly. Their services cost. And also because we have projects that, that is lower.
That's correct, and that's what I mentioned on the water waste water side, you know, no third projects. For instance, to make up the slower fall in revenue in water side instead of dipping into our ninety day operating reserves. We have to replace that in two years, we borrow from that and fund projects. We delayed a few projects, we have those programs, excuse me, programmed back into the twenty full budget now. And we plan on doing those next year.
I know, but I was only asking about the change.
Right, I know, but I'm, I'm just, okay, I'm sure I had it right, that's right.
Can I ask a question?
You should be.
Yes, so if the general fund is made at pre-tax revenue, where's the sales tax?
So the property tax and the sales tax revenues can bind, Deborah, the totals and just rough numbers. We, we collect about nine million in sales tax.
Okay.
And about six, about six million in property tax.
Yeah.
Correct.
Sixty.
About sixty, sixty three percent.
I was just wondering why, you know, the general funds may not hit property tax level. I was just wondering why you use just.
So technically we could shoot our sales tax projections a hundred and ninety four thousand dollars higher and hope that we hit it and then we'd be good. Because so much of our, our general fund is for sales fees.
Right. And right now, Krista, we were estimating. So that's.
Nine million.
Which is the increase, what percent?
Two percent.
Right, I think that's a number that Tim and I discussed, you know, we started at five, ten, correction said, I'm more at two or three and this was three or four months ago. And you know, really based on where we are today, as the gym shape has said too, you know, it's a very conservative.
It's, it's still best case, but we stay conservative. We love to be surprised when it's higher.
Is that based on prior years, extrapolating from prior years or is it just kind of a? No, it's based on a number of, Tim, I don't know if you can weigh in on this, but it's based on a number of factors, what sales taxes do across the region here. Can you give us a, it's always changing, right, I love it, so it's kind of important. Yeah, I think the economy can get worse, or it gets better.
Same question, what's your question again specifically?
Well, since you're standing there, I don't mean being asking questions necessarily, but I, yeah, we, we first started talking about this. We were projecting five percent.
Yeah.
And yeah, you raised your eyebrows just like that and you said, no, I'm more at two or three percent. We sat around, this was with council members individually, talked about this, we're at about two percent now. But I'm just curious, you know, based on the metrics to look at, what, what, where are, where are our neighbors, neighboring communities compared to us? And really your outlook on sales tax and Fredericksburg coming here?
Yeah, the, every month I prepare three sales tax reports and one of them is kind of a peer group analysis that shows some of our neighboring communities, some other tourism destinations, and then also shows statewide averages for both cities and counties. And we're seeing some places starting to trend down and showing negative growth every month. Uh, there's still, we're now nine months into the reporting year, everybody's still positive, but what you're seeing is over the last few months, some people have turned negative. And I'm not suggesting that's going to be the case here, but you've got to keep in mind, we've enjoyed some real robust sales tax growth over the last several years and, and so being flat is not a bad thing to be because, you know, you're still way ahead of where you were in twenty nineteen, for instance. I, I think, I still think that's the right. That you, Tim, somebody said you have seen the, you watch the trends routinely that are experiencing either slower or negative? Is that unusual, do you think that's unusual for those particular locale? My question's directed at, we all think Fredericksburg's bulletproof. Well, there's a lot, a lot of things that go into this and do you know where we are here today? I think the number's in about four, a little or close to five, right?
Forty five.
So if, if you were to take inflation out of that number, you know, you're, you haven't had any real gain there.
Right, so can we talk about that just here, because that's an important part of the equation. As inflation is going down, cost of goods and services is going down. This is something I'm talking about, finding set up with, with the same population, this service coming for Fredericksburg, everything costs. So your sales tax numbers are up when inflation is high. Yet same number when it comes down, your sales tax is low. So it doesn't, it's not necessarily affected by volume, but it's affected by.
You know, the price of goods and services, I would consider. And, and the other thing, and this is kind of the difference between what we're seeing happening in the city and what's happening in the balance of the county is, yeah, we've got some stuff going on in town, but we're really not adding a lot of sales tax, new sales tax outlets in town that are going to be revenue generators and create new, you know, sales tax income for the city the way we've been seeing over the last ten years in the county and continue to see. Yeah, that's the other thing that I look at, you know, we're building something that's significant, that's going to have, be selling more stuff. And I've been telling, really? Nothing else to think about.
So the numbers can be debated, how much are going to be actually true this operation generates that $6 million. But the other thing is is that that's purely discretionary, excuse me, discretionary spending. That's not generally, you look at the old basic economic numbers, that's not generally adjusted for inflation, inflation.
Right.
It's a very slow moving process where it's consumer goods, HEB, it's down. It is more receptive to, but I don't think you'll see a whole lot of change with the exception of just the volume of people traveling because their pocketbooks will get more of their general locations. And we've seen that, I mean, I've had businesses and many people once in a while now, I've seen that cycle happen once. But like Tim mentioned, the last three years were stellar. So if we adjust down to a stupid, pretty decent shit, I think your numbers, particularly if you mentioned two percent is a very good concern. I think we'll see, I'm just basing that, I can revisit that I have on my resume, that.
So.
Do a little bit of downturn this month, this month, but I anticipate it back to launch also. I think that number you're using.
We had to see it's two percent.
Tim, where are we compared today compared to two thousand nineteen? I mean, during that time, we increased twenty percent. I bet you it's a retirement. I hear it because inflation pushed a lot of that out. But again, it kind of pushes, inflation pushes the bottom up, the amount, it also pushes the substance. That's where we're at.
Okay, here's, here's a good perspective. Again, we're talking about the reporting year, it really runs from November through October. Total sales tax receipts for the city in, in reporting year twenty nineteen, six million one hundred nineteen thousand dollars. This year, year to date through nine months, we're six million seven fifty eight. So we exceeded two thousand nineteen numbers, you know, in nine months of operations.
You know, the nice goal is a.
Yeah. Your statement is that, that there's going to be some economic strike on the nation, so what up here?
Yeah, that was your answer, ladies and gentlemen.
I think we're already, and I'm glad Tim did businesses that aren't. Check on, right?
Is that one in town making any money?
You are hearing merchants whose, whose sales are off significantly. And then, and you're hearing others that are, that are, you know, doing, doing well. So I think a lot of it boils down to what they're selling, you know, what price points and is it you know, a justifiable expenditure or is it really something that they, they can't justify? And I think that's, I think that's the difference there. I think everybody's being squeezed, you still, you're still seeing a lot of people coming to Fredericksburg and they're, they're spending money, but I think many of them are being much more judicious about what they're spending money.
Thanks, Tim.
This is just the value of us being conservative of what we think we're going to get in and then what we're going to spend. So to be criticized in that way could be interesting because it makes sense to make sure that a little bit in. You could, you know, like the numbers and say, okay, we're going to go three percent on sales tax, okay, we're done, let's, let's follow it. So we're being judicious about the budget.
Yeah, one thing we talked about this morning is, is why don't we put a goal out there, leadership, back to their house perspective, and don't have buy-ins, right? But I think this is something that we're certainly creating a new target. I don't remember what that target is, but it's basically a, essentially a mental revenue stream that they're not realizing today. Whether that is some sort of a tourism tax that we can implement based upon what's related to taxation. I would like to see, let's take, pursue that in the next fiscal year and try to identify one of those one or two three steps. Whether it's additional tickets and work slots, whether it's, you know, getting tours and tax, or SDR and hotels. Something to help alleviate some of the tax burden.
Right, and a couple of bits here, keep listening to any of the budget discussions from, from the very beginning. This is something that we talked about even ahead of budget discussions during a seven hour work session with the council. We talked lately about, you know, how can we, how can we get just a little bit more. We talked about, you know, how can we, how can we get just a little bit more visitors to take part in that third month or taxpayers? And we really started this conversation when a local council member wrote that about Fox Clear requesting the city increase our population percentage and defer all that additional revenue to support lease, borrowing events. So those departments have to be a lot larger than they, they need to be for tourism. You know, we have, Randy talks about this all the time, a thirty percent increase in calls Thursday through weekend. We have the data, we can show you the numbers and we can either respond to those types of things uh or we can keep it small and not, you know, we're saving lots every day, twenty four hours a day. But everyone in this community, including most of us, paying, subsidizing those departments for our tourist. So it's a balance. What Randy's saying is we're continuing to look at ways to again, get just a little bit from our visitors. We talked about fees on Market Square. Again, those that have heard the conversations, we've talked about it, are ahead of feet. We're trying to recover some of the cost of the city to manage those events. We think it's a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. How do we recover some of that funding? How do we get just a little bit more from visitors again to help subsidize the general funds that we can relieve that tax burden for citizens? And that's something that I want to continue flesh out, we continue to talk to our city attorney about. I think we're edging a little bit closer to some pretty good options that may be considered.
Look, this is some of the things you were talking about, of trying to find ways to relieve our dependence on property. Council, what else?
I'm for a tourist district. State law requires sixteen percent of all S T Rs and hotels to approve. So if you want to get your, in the S T R alliance or whatever, the hotel management association. That's just getting support in there.
I, I know a few people in the S T R alliance and I think I just looked a poll there, but you're based on mixed direction, you know, when you need to get the hoteliers to buy into it as well. And it's very important is that any other hotel coming into our city would then be something to that as well. So that you can see recurring predictable revenue stream that isn't on a growth trajectory based on our growth patterns. But I think it's something that is probably the most critical thing we can do as a council this year is develop a plan to do this execution.
Anything further, council? Chris, Tim?
During the costing of the patents list. Food and wine festival, I did speak today and um uh now, if, you know, the scenario is we weren't going to have a festival in twenty twenty four, what our budget would need to look like. I also ran some, we need to report just to see what our expenses and revenue typically look like the first quarter of the new year. We would probably do, we can either leave things alone or they, but if we do change, if we want to leave about a hundred thousand, we're going to bring a thousand.
Cover this year. Right. Clear to go. Counsel, anything further? That all business having been transacted and discussed for this meeting, we are.
That's your, thank you.